We'll be presenting on the zoning districts and we'll be presenting on the rural land use, such as subdivisions and some of the rural planned unit developments and some of the resource protection standards. So if you can make it out, come join us, please. May 19th, the Select Board will be having a public hearing on the proposed amendment to the town plan, the one that we had here at town hearing on at the last meeting.
Did they consider that controversial?
No. And we don't permit contemplating it as controversial either.
Right. It's just that sometimes things that we don't think are controversial, we think maybe. So I ask.
That's good.
Okay, so there's no public for public comment. So let's just move right into Brandy Saxton and her presentation on the land use regulations.
Okay. So did you send the water and recreation like out?
No, because I just got it this morning. By the time I opened up my email.
So at the last meeting, you requested that I work on the purpose statement to the water and recreation district. I did that.
So one of the packets that you maybe picked up off of the table, there was a memo, a couple-page memo, but then under that, there was a new, some new chapters.
Oh, I'm sorry. Doesn't look good at all.
So the revised water and recreation district purpose statement. So is that it?
Yes.
I don't have it read it out loud.
What is the more looking at right now?
Just that purpose statement on 240.
Like right here.
The fact thing that's yet put.
Are any of those policies likely to be objectionable to privately owned people land there?
Any of the?
Well, there's those one, two, three, four.
Encourage the management or development of these lands in accordance with.
I can't hear you.
I was just reading it out loud, I'm sorry.
I mean, I don't really, no, I did try to emphasize the pathway concept to try to help bolster that.
Brandy and I were talking a little bit about it beforehand and I felt like whatever the development or, you know, activity that was going on didn't have to do all three. So maybe some sort of, you know, I was trying to think on the fly of a way to reword it so that it wasn't necessarily had to do all four of those things, but that these were kind of the, you know, some sort of unifying feature of lands.
So like some measures may include.
Yeah, we, or it could just do an and/or, you know, a colon list with and/or at the last one, so I could tweak the wording or, you know, take advantage of their proximity to water through approaches such as.
Yeah.
I think just switch out by for such as, and then that's, I wouldn't read that each development application has to meet each of the four policies.
I'd like that changed, otherwise I think.
What did I just say?
Such as. I want to do some sort of such as statement there. That's nice and grammatically correct.
Yes.
I just do that naturally, you know.
I just wondered, seeing you were mentioning pushback, I just wondered if that would be a place where people who own, you know, people who privately own, I'm not so concerned about the town-owned or.
Somebody's on a tributary stream, for example. But it has to be in the district.
Right.
Right. I would say that the lands that are privately held, that are covered by this zoning district are, for the most part, in a good situation to take advantage of the physical asset that is the water. And so, insofar as it might be difficult for the existing owner to grasp, it does something positive potentially for the land value and a different owner with a different vision could develop that parcel in a way that was consistent with these policies.
Waterfront property.
Waterfront property is waterfront property, it's, you know, it does feel a little bit weird to actually have to explain to people that it's, you know, worth something. But, you know, it's just, I'm obviously not from here. So, yeah. Yeah, the prevailing North New England ethos is that that's what you push your cars up against, the ones you don't drive anymore. But in the rest of the world, actually, it's not what we do.
Okay. So that's headed in the right direction with a little more defining, we'll have it.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. So Sue wanted to talk about the industrial district boundaries, and we have the map up.
Yeah, okay. To the south of town, there on Route 5, there is an area of land that neighbor, borders Guilford. So you see that big purple chunk that the little hand is on right now? There, there's a piece of green, there's a green triangle to the western, see where the letter O?
Sorry.
Okay, it's all right.
I have my mouse on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The screen.
Yeah, the green triangle. That is currently a zoned residential. And the question that we have is, does it make more sense to actually take the industrial all the way through to the town line so that it's consistent on both sides of what is known as Paul's Road, which is a road that services a large predominantly industrial planned unit development, PUD.
So this is Commonwealth area here?
Yeah.
Is there anything in that green triangle?
There's some houses in there, something.
There's, there's three houses, I believe.
One property and then a.
Yeah.
There's what? Two on one property, so. There's two on one property.
And one other.
And there's one other.
Yeah.
Can you show the parcel lines?
And the rationale, so what we're looking for here is consistency on both sides of the road, basically. And what you'll notice.
Can I show parcel lines on this? I don't know that I ever gave you one that had the parcel lines in a KML file.
Oh.
Do you want to see if you can?
I can go on the map somewhere.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, do you want to do it on map somewhere? So the, while Sue's doing that, then the little person popping around. This area here.
Back green.
Back green, that's rural residential. That forms, that's some, that forms an important border or gateway between what is a small village, Algie's Village, to the south of here, which is just off screen, and then, and then that area, which allows for the kind of maintenance of that landscape. Those things are not unquestioned so much for either side of Paul's Road, for topographical reasons as much as anything else. So on the western side of Route 5, the road's quite steep and difficult to access, and so it'll stay a wooded slope on that side, whereas the side that's preserved is rural residential on the eastern side of Route 5 actually could be vulnerable to low-density residential development. And so, it's a minor adjustment that we're making. We think that there's more purpose to advancing industrial uses in conjunction with the planned unit development as it currently exists. There's now a large water line that services part of that, that planned unit development. And so there, and the road is in reasonable shape for truck traffic, and there's already truck traffic on it that's substantial associated with the operation of the dairy. So in fact, the use value of that little green triangle as residential is somewhat limited. But that's not, that's not the case as you move up and down that Route 5 corridor a little bit to the east. Where you see the, the town line is demarcated by the, by the zoning districts ending, so where it's just trees, that's Guilford. So even from Route 5, you can't actually really easily establish the industrial nature of that planned unit development. You don't, there's no, there's no visual impact from Route 5 itself because it's buffered by what is actually Guilford, if you follow what I'm saying.
Is there a large parcel per se in that area, or is that closer to 91? This one listed for a while.
There's one closer to 91.
Ah, okay. Is that the one we've came into industrial?
Yeah. And so, I should, I should just, in terms of context.
And that's where the solar farm is.
We'll get, yeah, we'll get to that later on. Sue, this area in here, in the, under the existing zoning, is zoned rural residential. And in fact, because of the proximity to this area, which is industrial, we've asked, so all this is, all this is basically new compared to now, right? And that's in recognition, again, of its proximity to the exit one on and off ramps, the proximity to this existing industrial park, and the fact that it's a very large parcel of which some, there's sort of a ridgeline running through here, which some could be developed into a large, relatively large-scale industrial use. And then you can either access Route 5 down here or a little closer to the on-ramp, actually down here or here. So this pocket here is preserved, there's an existing low-density residential neighborhood with some other uses mixed in. I think there's a panel shop or something that's pre-existing and dates back a long time. But there's a small row of houses that are down below the height of the road through here, and then continues on through this part of the park.
What is, what is in that whole purple zone, like currently in lower too, to the left, on the left, sorry, the west side? Yeah, that whole, what is there right now? I mean, it looks like a large area that's forested right now, so I guess.
Yes.
There's a little bit of.
Sue.
It's trails.
These are trails that you can just make up here. This is, oh, this is cleared land, there's a small semi, this is a small office here that started off as a residence. This is the Omega Optical headquarters, and this is the Commonwealth Dairy Yogurt Plant.
There's a school in there, too.
No, it was there, it's moved to Austine School. That's, the school used to be here, and it's moved. So this apparently is now going to be used by Omega Optical, which is here.
It's also former junkyard land.
The whole slope from about here, all the way down to Guilford, was a junkyard, and there's still evidence of that use. If you're after a 1926 Dodge rear-end, it's about there. So.
Isn't that part of Bob Johnson's PUD and he was going to put residences up in there?
Yes. Yes. And then the, if you, can you scroll, you know, grab it, go drag it down? Okay. And so then there's the Austine School here. So at this point, and their Austine School property is large, right? But they sure, they share a border, these two properties. And there's a series of trails through here that are, can be accessed for either from this side or from this side.
So the PUD for Austine and the PUD for Omega.
The Delta Campus, yeah.
Have a common border?
Yes.
But you've got green in the middle there?
Yes, we, because this is more of like the campus setting, but this, this is part of the Austine School PUD, but isn't it accessed?
It's accessed off of Guilford Street. And if there was, if there was access.
Is it residential? Yeah, rural residential.
Right. So this is not, this is land held by them, but it's not really associated with the layout of the campus.
But it's still in their PUD.
Yes.
So really the edge of their lands and the campus, right? Yes.
Right. So then if you, sorry, Sue, if you, I wish I had my own mouse. Yeah. So yeah, so this is, this is a parcel boundary, not a, not a road. This is the only road.
No, Brad, that's trails.
These are trails, yeah. I'm sorry. So this is the main road, you know, vehicular road. If Peter's out at around about this point, becomes pretty much just a track, and then, so, but our attention is focused right down here. And so all we do is propose to change this from green to purple straight across here in recognition of the road, the services, the amount of traffic, and the, it's just a consistency question.
Okay. One thing to point out, yeah, the one thing to point out is that it will make those houses that are in there non-conforming.
Right.
Can I ask a just question?
There's only, I think there's only three homes.
Why wouldn't we, if it's about consistency, just change it going like this instead so that those houses can still stay rural? I mean, just cut it that way instead of adding the.
So that would work.
Probably. Are those the parcel lines?
Yeah. These follow parcel lines now, yeah.
So if those people wanted to build a garage and we did this, you'd say no dice, right?
And they'd have to get a variance or something?
No, they can continue.
They can continue the use.
They can continue a residential use.
Oh, you can, okay.
Yeah, sure. Just because they're non-conforming doesn't mean to say that they can, you know, and building garage next to your home is not going to exacerbate non-conformity.
Well, might not, like that the rest of the back, back of their properties becomes industrial, might be more radical.
Right. I think it, I think it opens up as many choices as a, I mean, there's opportunities as well as, as pressure, but it's more, it's a much more consistent.
Yeah, it sounds like.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that, I say, but I'm just wondering about those, I mean, if I was one of those homeowners, I might not want the back end of whatever I have but becoming an industrial zone.
Well, this is following the property.
But it already is.
It's following the property and the town line. Right? So if it's, if this is the back, then it already is industrial, and if this is the back, it's Guilford, which, which has no zoning. So, you know, we're closing in the virtues of land use planning.
Okay. So what do we think?
I think it sounds, it sounds like probably the best purpose of that land is the industrial use.
Right. I think its first best use is as the continuation of industrial uses, given the traffic and the activity that's already here.
And leaving the other one along Route 5 as rural residential because it's on, fronted on Route 5.
And it has a gateway function.
Has a gateway, yes.
And what about the little chunk along Route 5 between those two rural residential areas?
The purple chunk between?
This little area, it's enough of a neighborhood, we're talking.
No, no, I'm talking about the purple. Like, wouldn't it make sense to possibly connect those, or is that a parcel?
These two?
You, you mean this one here?
No, the purple in the middle.
Yeah.
This is, this is actually part of the exit one industrial park.
Yeah, parcel, okay.
Yeah.
Is there a risk that you would create obsolete lots during this because the lots in the triangle are too small for them?
No, they're all bigger than the minimum parcel size of industrial.
All right, we tried to trip you up, we couldn't.
I'm curious, how does this come up? Did you, do you stumble on it and you're like, oh, a triangle, or?
Just, yeah, the whole thing about the virtual Paul's Road, now it works.
He's sitting up at 3:00 AM staring at that map.
Yeah, I know.
Don't, don't, don't even say it. All right, so.
Are there any other concerns that you want to, do you need us to vote on this, right?
I don't think you need to vote, I mean, if we have consensus that we should do that, then the next iteration of the map will, will show it as purple, which will be industrial. Yes? Okay. So unless there's anyone.
Consensus seems to have been reached.
Okay, great.
And so industrial means that that whole forested area, all that purple, could become a solar farm, for instance, if somebody wanted.
It does open up those kinds of opportunities and actually.
Well, you could have those opportunities regardless.
Regardless, because of the way the Public Service Board treats us, but, which is that we're a zero. So, but yes, it enables that happening more readily, and actually, it's, topographically, it's interesting to the extent that it, the hill, that slope faces south, southeast. So in fact, it's not a bad location for solar panels. It's open, it's open to the south.
Was this whole part industrial before, or was it something else?
No, this is, this is interesting.
Yeah, okay, so, do you want to do this?
Actually, so this, this used to be rural residential, but under our existing planned unit development regulations, you were able to change the underlying uses, you know, a planned unit development is a zoning change. And with that, you could change the underlying uses. So this, the planned unit development came forward with an idea of having some industrial uses kind of where they're located, and then to the left of it, having like housing, kind of like worker housing, or, you know, kind of the old model where you can live up on a hill and walk down to work and live in this area. But really what it's, it's not really, is it fair to say it's not been as successful, lived up to that idea?
It's never, it's never realized its potential in that regard. So the first thing to remember is, even though it was owned rural residential, it was a junkyard, and it was a huge junkyard, it was notoriously large. And so it was like known outside the state as a very large junkyard. And it dates back to the time when Peter Shumlin was young enough to play there. So, in fact, most men my age or older who grew up around here have vivid memories of getting their first car on the road by virtue of that junkyard. So.
Makes me want to go there.
Like I said, if you're looking for a '27 Dodge rear-end, that's there. So, so the key is that when Bob Johnson from Omega Optical bought it, it was to reclaim, it was to deal with it as a brownfield and to reclaim the land, which is a good thing. And then, so when he did that, he also created through then zoning processes, the whole area's a PUD, and had this vision of an industrial, light industry and worker housing community, basically, with a heavy orientation towards outdoor activity and trails and so forth. But it's fair to say, it hasn't realized its full potential for.
The utopian vision hasn't been realized.
And so now that it would be industrial, they wouldn't be able to do something like that?
They would, but I think the reality is.
The PUDs still exist, so yes.
Yes.
They could still, they could still do what the vision was.
The big turning point, to some extent, is the sell, the sale of the land and the creation of Commonwealth Dairy, which is a genuine industrial use, which changes the character of the development to some extent because of the truck traffic and worker, you know, they have two shifts.
Generator.
They have 50 employees. So you're talking now about a bona fide industrial area.
It could just be on the lower end, because if residential happens up at the top where he's seen it, that's, you know.
It's got beautiful views, but there's the question of whether people will want to access high-end worker housing by driving through an industrial subdivision, which is what it is at the lower.
And you still have the impacts, I mean.
Couldn't you also access it from over here, though? I mean, if you, if this part that's all forested with trails and stuff, then it couldn't that they're likely to access from Guilford Road as well?
Guilford Street does provide access up here, it's very limited, and there's topographical challenges. So really severe topographical challenges, which, so, do you want to scroll, do you want to drill up into it? Okay. So you see this little driveway, this little, this goes straight down, and then straight up, and then straight down, and then straight up again, and would be extremely expensive to establish access. But there's a right-of-way, a very small right-of-way through here. It's not big enough to provide emergency vehicle level access to whatever you would subdivide in here. And then there are two wetlands, like this sort of logan-shaped here, this sort of this flattening out of the hill, and then there are two wetlands that kind of make it extremely challenging to develop in here for housing. And then you've got the, the challenge of the road network. As you go further south on Guilford Street, this is all private land, there's no, there's no access here, from here to here, that's available. You'd have to buy large amounts of property, demolish the homes, and then establish access, which seems improbable at this point. And then assuming that you, the topography's not the challenge, which in fact it is, is a big gully, basically, running north-south here that you have to traverse. So realistically, given what we know about the housing market and given what we know about a whole bunch of other things, including the active 50% for here and here, there, this is not a realistic option at this point for access. It would be more likely to come through here, but even that's pretty challenging, given what's going on just off the screen there. So.
And the original PUD concept was to come from Paul's Road.
Was to come from Paul's Road. So the idea was to sort of focus the, the energy, if you like, or focus the development in this sector here, have the worker housing sort of off the side here.
Why not have it mixed use?
What's that?
Would there be any reason to have it as mixed?
No.
No, because I mean, at this point, the underlying, all the permitted, all the predominance of the uses for each parcel, and it's constructed in a fairly odd way as a PUD, where it's very specifically identified parcel by parcel as to what's permitted, and it, the area and the number, and the amount of land available for housing is actually limited. And it just hasn't, it's never taken off. Meanwhile, this has taken off.
One of the goals of the town plan is to increase large industrial parcel.
Yes. And I think that, you know, I don't want to speak for Bob Johnson, but I think on balance, he's happier that he's been able to sell a parcel and have it developed for the dairy than, than to not have sold it. It's the only other.
It's the trees, it's the trees that are kind of like looking at that whole forested swath.
I don't.
Yeah, but it seems like they're not, they wouldn't be threatened by.
I don't, I don't believe the trees are threatened at all, actually. I don't.
Because of the topography, yeah.
I think what you see in terms of the extent of the development is, is, you know, pretty much that area that where you can tell there are no trees, it would be the limit of development.
Yeah, I was just having that moment of, am I going to look back and that whole area's going to be paved, and I'm going to be like, I was on the plan in this moment.
No, because our regulations limits clearing on steep slopes, and they're steep in there.
Right.
And there's some wetlands.
Right. So I think, yeah, I think that the topographical challenges are such that.
His proposed plan initially was to allow for something like five different industrial lots there. He had them marked out, and they're pretty much along that area that you see that's open, along that bottom part of the road. And he had certain people, he wanted people to develop plots in a, I don't want to say environmentally friendly kind of, or energy efficient kind of way, because Omega Optical is sort of state-of-the-art, I don't know, but LED lead.
Oh, L E E D?
Yeah.
It's pretty low impact.
But it's close.
And the area up the top, the top part of that, that upper purple triangle?
Yeah, I'm curious about that, too, because I remember looking at that with people for, like, coming in a living situation. So is that where the property has been for sale and?
So this is the old latches ski jump again, really old man remember jumping the ski jump here, in here. And this is also potentially the site for the prison that ended up being built at Springfield. We lost that competition. So, just. So just. But second is First Amongst Losers. So it's very steep, obviously, because it's good enough for a ski jump. But there's this long, relatively flat terrace around, you know, parallel to 91. So when you're driving up and down 91, you get to see it. You know, you see where the Whollstein School is and that kind of terrace continues down through into here a little bit. Access is a bit challenging, but it's one really big parcel and it's appropriate to think about it for industrial purposes, given its proximity to other industrial uses and then the off-ramp on I-91 and the service center here.
And it's large enough to have its own buffer?
Yeah, it's got more than enough of its own buffer. I mean, I think that realistically, you could develop an industrial site in here and it still would not have a visual impact on road users on 91. Because it's up pretty high.
Is it site for sale?
I think it is. There's another little, there's a small parcel along here. It's also for sale. If you drive up and down Route 5, you'll see it for sale sign. Yeah, I think the owner is open to offers.
Right?
Yeah, so...
While you're up there, can you just point out where the... We're going to come to it later, but while you have the map there, the solar for down there, is it on there or is it...
I keep on thinking somebody else is going to move it, but that's okay.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Further down?
I'm getting used to it now. Okay, so this is John Sykes Drive. It ends here. Piece of land that we're talking about is actually tucked in here.
Not the, not the, not the, up the other side.
This is up at the town on Water Tank and the property that we're talking about is just to the north of that.
And that's different than what's in our packet here?
No.
No.
Are we living on top of it?
Oh, it's a second. So they have two sites. They have one by the West River and then this.
We're just discussing it because we've got the map.
While I'm here, so that you're not confused, I'll show you the other side, because we can. And I know it's later in the agenda, but I'm here for the...
Right there, that's the green. That, right there.
Yeah, it's right there, where the little hand is.
That's a plot, that whole thing is a field.
Where are we now?
This is 91. This is the West River. You can't really see here from now because you're so fearful that you're going to fall off the bridge and it's kind of blocked. But there's a raised kind of terrace here, formed at an earlier point in the life of the river. It's about 80 feet above the railroad tracks down here. This is the railroad track. And so it's this area that it proposes in for the second solar installation.
Which reminds me, I do have an announcement. The 91 Bridge is the Bridge of the Year, according to Bridge Magazine.
Really?
It's not done. Why Bridge of the Year when it's not...
It's designed and it's great beauty.
Even though it's not a year?
It will be a thing of beauty and, you know...
We're not creating major havoc in town when they close parts of the...
That's okay. All right, so... So any other questions about that discussion item?
How many more questions can we come up with?
I think you've exhausted it all.
All right. Urban center floor area ratio. There's been some discussion of this, what you have in your current draft now, for refresher, sets a maximum floor area ratio of four, but we allow buildings up to six stories. So the question comes, that means that you couldn't, if you have a small lot and you had a building that was essentially the footprint of the lot, you couldn't get six stories. You could actually only get four because the floor area ratio would max out before the building height would max out. We've looked at a site that's got a potential development on it that would be over the four. We've looked at what they're looking at and talked a little bit about this and are recommending increasing it to five, but not to six. So that even if you did have one of those small footprint lots, aesthetically, do you want a six-story building coming straight up the size of the lot? You don't have anything really of that character now in the downtown. By going to five, that would allow the top two stories, the fifth and sixth stories. They would have to be smaller in footprint. You know, they would be stepped back. So from the street experience, you would look at it, it would really read like a four-story building, but it would, you know, still provide some opportunity for those fifth and sixth stories. There really aren't a lot of such likely sites in the urban center. I don't think you're going to see a lot of five-floor area ratio buildings necessarily, but we found one.
Which one?
The one on Flat Street.
There's not too many infill sites.
A new one, biologic.
Yeah.
How many was she proposing?
I think that it doesn't have five stories, Sue, or six?
I think that, you know, conceptually it would be six.
Yes.
But it does step back at some point. It doesn't, it's not a six straight up. And that was the concern with doing a floor area ratio of six is that you're going to get, you would potentially be allowing a solid block of six stories all the way up. And it's not really the pattern of downtown. I mean, it's four on the main street.
And I think that there's something to think about with our, you know, like, I'm thinking about like the Hooker Dunham, like, which looks like something from the street and then it actually has all these because of our hills, you know? And, you know, I think, thinking about like Flat Street up to Elliot Street, would it, you know, like if you're actually, I don't know. Like, I'm just, if on a flat surface, I think what you're saying, you know, is makes perfect sense that you want to mitigate it. But I just wonder also in relation to our...
So there's also...
It's more fire truck issue than anything else, I think.
Yeah, there's the fire truck issue. And there's also the definition of story. So you have to look at the definition of basement in order to see whether some of those lower level that will count as a story or not. It really depends whether they come out from the grate on the one side fully or not. So in some cases where you're building into the hill, a lower level may not count as a story.
I see, okay, but like in that place, the flat spot that would just be going up.
Yeah, like some of those Hooker Dunham buildings or even in the, what used to be called the Italian-American building where Omega Optical used to be, down under, what's it, twice upon a time, that goes down lower again in the back. And they've developed some of that into office space. But it's from Main Street side, you think of it as basement.
I like the idea of the stepping back on the upper floors if we're going to go up.
Yeah, I think, you know, architecturally, that will keep the scale of the street and will also accommodate this proposal adequately at five. That's the recommendation.
Thank you.
Before that?
Okay.
Sample?
The graduate center?
It's five.
It is?
Stories, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it is. But it's got a large lot.
It's got a large footprint, though.
Yeah, so I think we calculated the floor area ratio on that one.
When we calculated, yeah, I mean, when we calculated, lots that were large had no problem. And there was, at four, there was plenty of room to have more stories or, you know, whatever they needed to do. It's the small lots that...
Where the building is essentially the footprint of the building is the covers almost the entire lot. That's where this starts to be a limiting factor.
Is fire the only reason we've... I mean, it sounds like what we're saying is we want to sort of limit like the height of buildings in the downtown area. Is fire coverage the only reason or are there others? Consistency?
It's certainly one of the principal reasons, but the other is that compatibility with the historic character and to what extent, how much higher than the historic pattern would you really want to go? And most of the buildings, the older buildings, maxed out at four. Although, like we're saying, some of them are built into the hills, so from various sides, they may appear a little bit different. But that tended to be the pattern. Thank you.
And to be clear on the fire thing, any building of this size that's new to meet fire code would be sprinkled. But it still raises the issue, particularly when it's a mix of uses. So residential, typically what we would be talking about, as in the biologic example, there'll be apartments on at least the top floor. And so where you have that kind of setting, the fire department still wants to be able to access using a ladder truck.
You want to be able to get the old lady out of the top story.
Yeah, so...
Swaving the white hanky.
Or the little cat.
The triangle shirt fire.
Yeah, so...
Causes a lot of land use control.
Yeah, right.
Right over here.
So I think that, that's the issue. But I think it's just as important for us, actually, is it would be a really significant shift away from the current streetscape if we were to permit much denser, taller buildings like that. So, and we're also talking about a tiny number of existing locations. I think the flat to Elliot Street hillside is an interesting one. I mean, the parking garage, to some extent, depending on your view about it.
And I don't know anything about the biologic layout and I don't want to hold it up, but it sounds very interesting.
Right. So there's an example where, you know, it's one or I guess it's two levels accessed from Elliot Street effectively and through, you know, five from flat. I wouldn't necessarily call it a success in some ways. And I think although that's not anyone's idea of a great structure, you run the risk of having some version of that happen, I mean, that, you know...
And that building happened like that.
Yeah, so...
Okay. Moving right along?
Sample implications?
Okay, how are we doing?
Okay. So at this point, you want space in the middle.
I do want some space here in the middle. So Sue and I spent a little bit of time this afternoon looking at two examples of fairly recent development projects and looking at how some of the standards would apply. I looked at the, and I'll, I think probably this is so small scale that I'll end up just passing it around once I summarize the findings here. I looked at the Chrysler dealership on Putney Road. You all have a visual image of that in your mind?
It's north of the Roundabout. It's across from Agway, in the area of Agway.
Got it.
It was redeveloped in the last three, few years.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Kind of the Chrysler logo building.
Okay, so in looking at, you know, what did it meet from the proposed standards and what it did not? In terms of lot size, building size and height, those elements, it met that. Actually, in terms of the quantity of parking, it comes in pretty close when you consider their employee and customer parking, not excluding the display parking spaces.
You're running a new proposed zoning.
Over this plan.
Okay.
So that came in pretty much right on what we were recommending there. So it's good on that front. The building there is fairly close to the road. It's about 40 feet, give or take, back from the road. And it got, you got the sidewalk put in at the time that that went in. So those were all fitting with the regulations that we've proposed. Where it has a little more difficulty is the amount of green space in front. So under the new zoning, there would have to be more green space. There is 20 feet of green space sort of at each end of the parcel, but then in the middle, it shrinks down to be less than 10 feet. So that's sort of, most of that 20-foot space along the street would have to stay green.
That's where they display their cars, isn't it? That...
Yes, they do. There is some parking. You'll see that I've sort of X-ed out the bits of asphalt that would have to come out of the front buffer here when I pass this around. There is some front display there, parking spaces to display cars. And the entrance in and out is there, but that would obviously be allowed under the current zoning as well at the sidewalk connector.
So this shows how it would be consistent, but it also shows the benefit of the more greening that we are proposing.
Yep. So based on how much frontage they have, right now, this front area is planted with 18 shrubs and three trees. And under the requirements, it would have to have six trees and a total of 55 shrubs. Now, they can be small plantings, but, you know, but if you think about the green space, it would be almost twice what it is now. So probably about a third more, actually, than the sum that already is 20. So more green space, more landscaping up front, essentially, is one aspect I looked at there. And I, we didn't have time to fully look at every element of the site. But I also looked, in the back of that property, it butts up to the stream. So we would run into the riparian 50-foot setback. And so I've sketched where that falls in on this site plan that I'll hang around. And this was a redevelopment situation. But if you were to imagine it being a new development situation, a little bit of the back of the parking lot runs into the riparian area. So sort of like that back row of parking, which is their employee parking, would have to move out of there. But there is some green space and some stormwater pieces that got put in back there as part of this redevelopment of the site. So it's moving closer to what's required of the zoning, but not quite there. And I ran out of time on sort of the internal landscaping and buffering and such. But certainly, there isn't any internal landscaping within the car dealership and there would have to be some under the draft and buffering around the edges. So you're really looking at a fair amount more green space associated with the use. But the actual setting of the building itself and positioning of the building itself is fairly consistent with what the regulations would be looking for. So I'll pass this around and you can kind of get a sense of my little sketched-in notes.
That sounds like a great exercise.
I looked at Walgreens on Canal Street.
What are these spots?
I was starting to count out how many parking spaces you can have contiguous before they need to be a break. So I was starting to show that the parking lot would have to be broken.
How do you decide which sites to look at?
We just tried to pick more, some more recent that might be kind of...
We wanted to test some of the landscaping and stuff back. So we just looked at more some...
Yeah, I mean, it was looking at landscaping and just kind of ones that maybe...
Oh.
This is Walgreens on Canal Street. So this is Canal Street.
I was just going to say, I didn't mention the lot coverage. That car dealership has about 72% lot coverage and under the zoning, we would allow up to 60. So you can see how all those features, all those factors are linked together, the under landscaping, greens...
The riparian area.
Yeah.
So this is Canal Street and this is Fairground. I, it's now two parcels, so I acted like this was kind of the edge of the property in the back, just for the purposes of the exercise. The parcel is one and a half acres. The building is 14,560 square feet. We have a maximum building square footage of 12,000 square feet in this district. So it's a little bit large, larger than we want. The floor area ratio...
Is that a standard size for Walgreens?
Yeah.
And so could they live with the smaller size?
No, I think that's probably the smallest of their three standard offerings at this point in the Northeast.
So they would move to a different prior town if they were...
No.
No, not them moving. I'm saying if they had not, if there was no Walgreens in town and they were looking under the new zoning, they would not be able to go there. Right, would have to, if they wanted to build in Brattleboro, find another place to build.
Yeah.
Where would they be able to go?
The service center.
The service center.
Brattleboro central.
Oh, God, Alison. You're hurting me. Hotel Promise. I know.
Would you like some moments?
Brattleboro Promise.
I like the arms.
Yeah, so, I mean, this is a pretty typical sized store for a chain.
If you go into Walgreens somewhere else, it's, you feel like you don't know where you are.
Isn't that in a service center?
This is, it's gonna be in the neighborhood center. So right now it is in a commercial district. We want to move it to a more pedestrian friendly, like, like I think the distinguishing between the service center and the neighborhood centers, we want more residential infill and more pedestrian friendly in the neighborhood center.
So is that whole strip mall across the street in a state, is that service center?
It's in the neighborhood center. That has a lot of infill opportunities on the. And there's even a pad for sale, or you know, that they're looking.
Good lease, a long-term late lease. So Sue, this is a Walgreens question that's really gonna get you going. You know the one on Warhol?
It's a Rite Aid now.
It's a Rite Aid now, isn't it?
No, it's a Walgreens. It used to be Rite Aid, yes.
Don't you think it's smaller than this one?
I do think it's smaller than this one, but it had previously been a Rite Aid.
Yes. It's not their, it's not their layout.
It is, it's definitely smaller.
It's not their configuration.
But clearly, they can be flexible if it's a neighborhood center.
If they want to be there, they can usually.
Yes, they can usually find a way.
Well, that's awesome.
I'm sure they have some sort of rural template, you know.
Well, I can only hope.
We're it.
In this zoning district, buildings are supposed to be ten to forty feet. Actually, I overchecked that.
You did bring your rule.
From the front setback, I can read this one. It's further.
We're watching.
It's about forty feet, so, yeah, so it's, it's good that way. Side setbacks are ten feet and it works there. We'd go forty feet on Fairground though as well, right? So this would have to be deeper. The, the landscaped area would have to be.
Would have to basically match the other side?
Yeah, it would have to be kind of this deep around. And the building would, would the building then have to be up? So the building, this would force the building. One of the criticisms of, of this building kind of is that it's done everything that was asked to do. And people are like, oh, it's too bad it's not on the corner. Under the proposed regulations, it would actually push it to the corner. Because you'd have forty feet from Fairground and forty feet from Canal.
So what they did, what they did under the existing regulations was say, it is at the front of the lot.
So in the, in the new regulations, it would push the parking to the back and this.
Just back on the side, yeah. So it would bring the building.
You could have some to the side.
So it would be more of a town center thing, which is what Dan Burton wanted.
There is a requirement of a landscape buffer of, you, you can choose between fifteen feet and ten feet on your, for your neighboring properties within the same district. So this is neighborhood center, this would be neighborhood center. This is, it meets the depth requirement and it's pretty close on the plantings. I think it's a little bit short on tall, on large trees. So it's supposed to, this is two hundred and forty feet, this distance. And it's supposed to have four large trees. It's kind of debatable if it has any large trees. There's probably some medium-sized trees. So.
There's some big twigs.
There's, there's lots of shrubs and, I mean, according to the planting.
They're never gonna get that big.
This is much closer to what we want in a planting plan than the other one we looked at, but it's still not quite there. This should have street trees and it only has shrubberies on Canal Street and Fairground.
Shrubberies.
I didn't pick out any trees here. There's trees in the parking lot, I think, right?
And is there sidewalk on them?
There is sidewalk on Canal and Fairground. There is connections to the sidewalk from the street.
Kids always cut through, though. They never walk on the sidewalk. And by cutting through, then they make a stop in.
Bravo. It's good and it'll be even better. Sounds great. The width of the parking aisles is complying. They're, it's supposed to be greater than twenty feet. It's about twenty, a little bit, a little bit more.
The one thing I'd be interested about in the original application is where they proposed to do snow storage or how they proposed to deal with snow storage and whether our proposed regulations address snow storage for lots like this.
It's an interesting idea because of the, the having plantings all the way around.
Well, in fact, you know, somewhat in sympathy to the operators of the site, this year, I think it was right here that they had a big snow mountain that was probably forty feet high and came out so that it blocked this whole drive aisle. And it stayed there for a pretty long time. Yeah. Actually, I said, we, we still have one. We still have a pile of snow. It hasn't gone yet. So, so I'm thinking, it's, I mean, you know, it's curious, it's a, it's a, it's a curious problem to me. It's clearly very expensive to truck it offsite. And they're disinclined to do that. This is one of those places, like lots of other retail places, where they actually leave the loaders in the parking lot all winter long, and then somebody just swings by, jumps in the loader, pushes the snow around and then parks the loader and drives to the next place.
Like at Academy School.
Yeah. And so I don't really know. You're from upstate.
Yeah. I mean, the one thing about increasing or decreasing the lot coverage is that you are opening up some more green space that is properly laid out, could potentially do some duty for snow storage, although you have to be careful in combination with the planting because it has to be, you know.
Resistant to being crushed by, by ice and loaders. Yeah. I haven't come up with a plant that does that yet, but.
And salt.
And gravel. Actually, and gravel, just grit and cigarette butts and.
But I mean, Sue and I were kind of talking about that, about the amount of green space in response to these, but it, I guess it goes back to thinking how much of the green stormwater infrastructure we're gonna try to infiltrate into these sites or get into these sites. And some of that also goes back to snow storage. But I mean, on a site like this, there just isn't gonna be any place to store it when we get, you know, four feet.
Yeah.
We got a big, huge. It's unrealistic to set aside that much land on each site to store that much snow necessarily.
Well, I think, I mean, that's sort of what I was getting at, that in fact, if I was representing the developer, the argument that I'd be making is that I need more parking spaces than you might otherwise think to accommodate really big mounds of snow in snowy years. And the best place to put the snow pile is on top of Blacktop. I know. And you're just being kind of the devil's advocate here.
Well, it probably is the best.
Well, there just won't be that much more snow coming here. Yeah, I don't think this year is typical.
It's not necessarily global warming. It's just climate change.
It's gonna be crazy.
Yeah, and, yeah, I mean, so it's one of those things. It's like, you're gonna, it's a contingency planning situation for something where like may or may not be that difficult depending for how many months out of the year and what problem is it really? You know what I mean? Like, so what? They piled their snow there and they blocked their own aisle. People could still come in and park and, you know, it didn't, it's no impediment. So to me, it sort of seems like it's like a perfectly reasonable adjustment to a winter with a lot of snow that you may not have to do for another couple of years.
But if we were gonna describe title limits on the number of parking spaces, that would be the pushback. That most years it's parking spaces and most of the year it's parking spaces, but I want the extra space because I want to be able to provide parking for my customers under the circum- and pile my snow. And so for this site, that was a, that, I don't think it ever got acute, but there were times when I went for my almonds and there was like limited parking. And so.
It's for almonds that Walgreens have.
I don't know.
I agree. They're on sale.
They're on, they're permanently on sale. It's just one of those funny Liz jokes that we have. It's like, they've never been the real price for years. So, and you know, other places like Hannaford's and Price Shopper and stuff had their own snow storage issues and they do it, you know, more or less badly or well, depending on your standpoint. If you look at Hannaford's lot now, you can see a lot of damage that was created by them piling snow up. It's been quite expensive and damaging. But it's just one of those things that you feel like in this climate, in this area, we could get pushed back around that. Or I think in an early version, we were looking at people being able to show on plan where they proposed to put the snow for reasons to do with, with water quality implications of it and so forth.
Well, this is a good example. We actually, this one was required to show where they pushed the snow because nobody wanted it pushed over into the brook.
Exactly.
So, I mean, that was.
So there are times when it does become actually kind of a operations and management.
But I would rather, I would rather that 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 applicant make that case.
Yes.
I mean, there are ways to get more parking and I, I just, I don't want to plan around having.
No, no, I just wanted us to be conscious that once you start getting into relatively tight calculations, that that's, you know, it's a possible pushback, that's all.
And I mean, we've minimized the parking down and you can double it before there's really any, double that minimum before there's any pushback on why are you putting so much parking in? So I don't think we've dialed it down so far that they're gonna.
That's fine. And don't misconstr- and not, not here working for the applicants.
Yeah, we're gonna beat you up after.
The Asphalt Association. You or your pocket.
I prefer my roads do it, so there you go. So, in my parking lots. So, okay, so that's, I just want to.
I didn't get around to looking at the building design, Brandy, if you're feeling more fluent on it, but I'm.
Don't sound like this.
Don't go toward the blue light.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I don't need to put you on the spot.
Yeah, without, I would have to measure it off. I mean, I think the, the very front of the building in terms of the windows are probably gonna meet the, the minimum requirements along the side where it's, yeah, on, I'm wondering about the Fairground roadside has less windows and more walls, so that one might have run into trouble.
If you, if you think this is useful, I mean, it's been some time.
It was very helpful.
We can try this some more of these.
Of the zoning, so maybe in subsequent meetings we can.
Oh, yeah, it's very helpful.
Now that we've had a refresher course in using the scales, we're.
Looking at this one, like, oh, no, it's the architectural one. Oh, no, it's got use.
It's been a while for us.
I gave Brandy my engineering one and I couldn't, I was like, I picked up his architectural one. I can't use this one.
Okay.
That's it, unless anyone has other issues that they would like to raise about the regulations. We're, got a few more things that we're chasing down and refining, I think.
I gave Brandy.
You know, I, I don't know, Sue, what you are envisioning, what you're envisioning, but you've got your meetings with the Select Board. I would assume following that, we would sort of have a wrap-up discussion of final changes.
And then public hearing draft.
And I'd be ready to start moving forward with that, so.
Brandy did provide you a few, you know.
I have a running memo.
Yeah, a running memo. So, I mean, we did, we decided not to go through it because a lot of it is just she made changes from the last meeting or things that we had talked about or her own cleanups.
Yep, so I'm, you saw that memo previously. New stuff is bold. I'll unbold it all now and I'll keep going, adding to the same memo. So when we get done, we will have a memo that outlines all the changes from that last public draft to the next public draft.
Sounds great. Thank you very much.
Are you all set? Do you need to get back in the office?
No, I don't think I do.
You sure?
I brought everything, yes.
So you're all set to go?
Yes.
All right. It's a nice evening for a drive.
Good night, Brandy.
Thanks a lot for coming.
Thank you, Brandy.
Okay, so, Brandy, Sue, you wanna tell us about these solar.
Yeah, while, yeah, why don't we, why don't we make a start?
Introduce the.
Yes.
Yep.
Regulations.
So, some of you may, actually, very few of you recall this. So let's look at, there's two things included in your packet. There's two letters. One from Winstanley Enterprises LLC and another from Green Lantern Group. Both relate to solar projects, but different parcels. And we've lost our internet access, so I can't play around. Yeah, right before we lost it.
These are unrelated?
Yes. There's no corporate tie that I'm aware of or anything. So the regulatory framework for solar panel installations of this size is set by the Public Service Board. And so the process that we're just at the outset of is what the applicant is called, what is called for the applicant, the certificate, obtaining the certificate of public good. So in Public Service.
We did this for the other solar thing for Winstanley.
So, so the first thing is the question of whether the town wishes to waive the forty-five day notice period allowing the applicants to submit their paperwork to the Public Service Board earlier than forty-five days. And the town did not waive that requirement. And so what this does is give various panels within the town, the Conservation Commission, the Planning Commission and the Select Board, time to review their applications and then wait for the applicants to file with the Public Service Board. And at that point, we can consider the applications while they're going through the Public Service Board process. So one of the things that Public Service Board calls for is that the applicant make informal efforts to obtain any feedback from the municipality where the sites are gonna be located. And in times past, what we've done is invited the applicants before the Select Board to present the project and to seek public comment. The most recent one was the first Winstanley project, which is adjacent to I-91, just south of the Holiday Inn Hotel. Only to Walgreens. At night, obviously, when the sun's not shining. Okay. So if you go out in the daytime, you'll see it. So so the Public Service Board doesn't give much deference to municipal plans, and this has been controversial in recent times. And it also doesn't recognize the Planning Commission as an entity before it, nor does it take into consideration. So it doesn't take into consideration the town plan.
Oh, wow. This is a lawsuit waiting to happen, right? That's, that's a little.
They, they take the general intentions communicated in the town plan. They do not take.
They can overturn, even if we specifically said, we don't want this, they can overturn it because it's not just for us. It's for the good of the state.
So the certificate of the public good, the certificate of the public good is set at the level of the entire state. So they're balancing the benefit coming from renewable energy for the entire state, achieving goals that are included in the comprehensive energy plan that the state has up against. Okay.
Very interesting.
Up against the, any, any impacts that might be borne at the local level, which may or may not be able to be mitigated. So they're balancing the wider good against the narrower impact. And generally, they find that in their terms, meeting the wider good, which is increasing the amount of renewable energy, far outweighs considerations of localized impact. What I was gonna say about the town plan is, is that you could have an explicit prohibition or you could have explicit language that stipulated how and under what circumstances you would want solar panel installations of a certain size to be treated or dealt with or mitigated. And they would, that they don't, they're not obligated to, to take that into account. So even though, and, and what's complicated there is that if we had explicit language about other land use concerns, say about, if we're a town, there was, you know, a ski resort town, we could include very explicit language in our town plan in the land use chapter about how, under what circumstances, a resort development could be proposed and where it could be located, and that would be binding under Act 250. Whereas this, you know, so in other words, there are other areas of land use law where making explicit statements in the town plan is acknowledged and is responded to, but not under the public's, not under these rules. So, so we find ourselves in a situation. Right. So we find ourselves in a situation where we're actually looking at something and have the ability to comment on it and recognizing from the outset, a little bit like talking to your children sometimes, that they're not gonna pay very much attention to it. But on the other hand.
But they'll be glad to hear from us and they'll make them feel better.
Right. And in the end, when they grow up, they'll realize that you were being, you were being, you were right. So so that's where we're at. Yes, exactly. So in this instance, we've got two. One of them is proposed for an industrial park, as we pointed out earlier today. And the kind of use, a solar panel farm, is not inconsistent with the industrial use. It is unlikely to have any visual impact beyond the boundaries of the industrial park. And there are, as far as I'm aware, no apparent issues associated with wetlands or disturbance or.
Which one are you talking about right now?
This is the Why Not Exit One Industrial Park.
The Green Lantern.
Wait, are you talking about the Green Lantern?
Well, I mean, it's owned industrial, so there is on some level an expectation that somebody's gonna remove some trees sooner or later to build a factory or something. So it's not, in terms of the area of impact, it's no worse than or larger than the impervious surface that you would expect to happen with a, say, a sixty thousand square foot warehouse or factory development and the associated parking for a hundred cars.
So is this right behind the dairy?
No.
What is this? What is this? Is that GSP?
What are these buildings?
I'm sorry. It's GSP Precision, it's GSP Precision School. So, and then it's north, it's north of the town's water tank. So, and then it's north of the town's water tank. You okay?
I need a map. I'm having a.
Here you go.
No, no, I mean, I'm trying to get into context.
Within the town?
Oh, like where you are.
Thanks, all right.
Okay, sorry.
Oh, well, okay.
Yes, yes, the local.
Down and go for it.
We're down at that place we were looking at before.
You know where the bread factory is?
No.
Do you know where the plumbing store is?
No, 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 what are you telling me? Are you on Route 5? I mean, drive me there.
This is 91. This is 91 here.
Where are we, Hammond, 91?
Is it in here?
Don't you spend your weekends driving around looking at things like this?
No, wait a minute. It's here. This is John Seeks Drive, right here, goes right along.
Okay.
One is GSP Precision, the other is.
She's alive, she's a daughter.
Okay, so we have been talking about like over here, but it's in this area. Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Okay, so Exit 1 Industrial Park is immediately after 91. As you're heading south on Route 5 towards Algeas Village, you take the very next left. And it's a long sort of.
That's where.
Yeah, I got it. I'm with you.
Can I ask a question here? This is a maybe question, but like, I really don't understand why we're looking at this. Like, is it an industrial use and an industrial is the issue?
Well, because it's before us and we have opportunity to comment, the comment is limited, but nevertheless, here we are, so let's wrap it up.
Okay. I see this sounds fine.
So this one, this one presents very few challenges. It's an industrial scale solar installation in an industrial park.
The Conservation Commission also reviewed this last week and they were like, perfect location.
Right.
Sounds fine.
We don't have any comments.
On the other hand, let's move to the Wind Stanley project, which is on the terrace immediately north of the West River, just east of the bridge, the new bridge being constructed on 91.
I was supposed to be sending these pictures because I didn't understand.
What's that?
This picture relative to. This is that. So they're showing you on this site that this would be, like, the black lines is how the solar things would be pointing.
Right here.
Yeah, it'd be like.
Yes.
Like that. But, so it's not the whole site, it's like one, looks like it's just like that bit of a corner.
And where's the existing solar? Is that this?
Yes.
Where they already have.
Okay, so let me make it clear. This is not going to work. So this stippled area here is the existing site.
Okay.
Just south of the Holiday Inn. The proposed one is this blob here.
So it'd be more lines going on this whole, this whole section and not other lines?
No, it gets the whole section.
It's going to be right there.
Yes.
Is it? It's not showing the whole section. Remember, they did a three lot subdivision. It looks like it's one of the lot.
Is this in this flood zone?
No.
No, no.
It is in our water recreation.
Right. So see this, see this large, see the top, the top photo?
Yes.
You see this whole area?
Yes.
Only the top third of it is going to be developed for this solar installation, right? So about the top third of this area here.
Got it, okay.
They recently applied for subdivision to subdivide this one big parcel into three smaller parcels.
And they're going to accommodate the West River Trail?
Um.
It's down lower, isn't it?
I'm not.
He says yes.
I'm the technical director.
Yes, you might want to recognize him.
Mr. Ingold, would you like to answer that question for us, please? Would you like to answer that question for us, please? Come to the microphone and sign in.
Sure, any sort of question you want.
Okay, so state your name.
Dan Ingold.
And?
I'm the technical director for the Wind Stanley Solar Development. So I'm the technical director for 90 Technology Drive, the large project, and also for the smaller project.
Great.
And also am a partner with another company, Green Lantern, and we're co-developing the project on Sunset Road.
You are related. Only you.
Intriguing.
Okay, so my question of whether the West River Trail will be commented in Mr. Ingold?
Yes. Before the bridge renovations, the West River Trail actually was on a roadway down below. But because of the construction traffic going back and forth, they asked the Wind Stanleys whether they could relocate the trail to that upper terrace. And we allowed them to go on that upper terrace, and actually in the design, you will see that we're still allowing them to use that. The idea in the long term is that when the bridge is finished, that bottom trail will be reopened.
Yeah, yeah.
But quite honestly, with the West River Trail, we're starting to get some people going further up to where the new chapter building is. There's actually some material work up there. And actually coming to look up at the 90 Technology Drive, the big solar project. So one of the thoughts we were thinking of is actually, we won't work with the West River Trail on this, but actually having the means for them to come up and look at the smaller project right off the West River. So, no, we are going to be very accommodating with the West River Trail.
Great.
For short term and long term.
Thank you very much.
I think it's in the permit to keep some kind of thing for the ultimate route, two years.
And that's what we designed for.
Under the subdivision, yeah.
It is a good opportunity to connect the West River Trail, though, up further to Technology Drive and as a bypass to Putney Road.
I didn't even know about that solar installation. I actually got off of the trail a couple of weeks ago and went out to Putney Road and then went over to the top of the hill. It's like, it's safe to be like.
It's probably safer than driving that neck down.
So Kathy was wondering, when we look at this map, it looks like it's in the blue area, which is water and recreation.
Mm-hmm.
And so does that allow, does that zone allow for?
It doesn't matter whether it does or whether it doesn't. It doesn't, it doesn't have bearing over this project because it's the Public Serv.
Because of all those things you already said, okay. I mean, I don't have any objection.
But there is.
These are proposed zoning and we're not there yet. Oh, that's right. Thank you.
You can't actually see the current solar from the West River Trail. Like, I was not aware of it when I was on the trail until my son went exploring. So it's not, it's not visually.
It's actually pretty low profile, too. It's not very visible from the height. I mean, you could see it, but if you're not.
So what are your plans for the remainder of the property?
I want to thank you because I've had a lot to do with that, trying to hide it.
Great, thank you. What are your plans for the remainder of the property?
I'm numb at this point. I think at this point it's going to remain follow. There was some thought when we did the subdivision that Rod talked about of having a couple of projects there. But with the state law, they're against close proximity for large projects. So I think we're one and done right there.
So, and that close proximity doesn't carry over to the other one that's on 191?
No, the close proximity is for net metered projects only. So this is a net metered, will have one regional customer, you'll be taking the power off that. Where the large project is what's called a speed, feed-in tariff project. And that project's four to five times the size of the one we're doing at the lower field.
And why is, why would the solar arrays only be on its, it's like the northern third of the.
Oh, that's easy, because we wanted to minimize aesthetic impact. And when you put it there, one, you're at the noisiest place because you're right next to where the bridge is. So you have, you know, high ambient noise background. But also, from an aesthetic, from the bridge or anywhere else, you're barely be able to see this.
That's good because we're into a lot of trouble to protect the aesthetics of the bridge. So the solar isn't using the whole of that?
No, it's the top, the top third of that.
Yeah, just about the top third.
Of this block.
Where the end of the arrow is.
Yes. So look, you see enlarged in the bottom one. You see the shape that it makes here. So it's about a third of the way through, just a sort of, just a bit further up.
Two or three road curves, you can imagine it.
Right. Yeah.
Okay. I would point out that our town plan does say that this is a, we dropped a binocular in this area as being scenic, so.
And it's zoned.
Does that mean scenic from that place or scenic looking at that place?
Both, actually.
That it's, yeah, that it's a scenic asset, both to look at and to look.
It is right at the highway, though.
Yes, but it also gives you a vantage point across the retreat meadows. You're about 100 feet above the water at that point. And so you have this panoramic view.
And you're coming down 91 to go across the bridge. It's beautiful.
Waterfront housing there.
Right.
How noisier are these things?
Solar panels?
Yeah, I mean, is there, is there noise?
Is, um.
He was talking about the.
Dan was talking about.
The ambient noise is way more powerful than you ever hear during the daytime from these. We're going to be using what are called string inverters and these pole-mounted transformers. It's a much smaller project than the 90 Technology Drive, but from a quiet, you won't hear it. At night, you don't hear anything.
I just wonder about as far as that visual, protecting that visual kind of scenic view thing, if, if there were, if a buffer zone of trees planted, kind of separating that. I mean, I don't know if that's something that we could suggest.
Oh, at the, at the eastern.
At the sort of southeast, southeastern edge of it?
Yeah, to sort of create a buffer there so that if you, but I mean, is this all private? This is probably all private land anyhow, right?
But that doesn't.
Doesn't preclude us from.
Making a suggestion.
Yeah, I mean, I guess when I see this, when I see this ring of trees here and I think like, if that, you know, then you could still have this scenic.
But that's higher up.
Yes.
This is a plate, this is like a plateau here. But there's a ring of trees around the entire plateau.
I think, I think the intent, though, what you're suggesting is that to, to make a suggestion that they take into account the views from the trail. So if somebody's on the trail looking up, is that the intent of your suggestion? I'm not, I'm, I mean, I, there was that question of what the binoculars are about, you know, if it's the view from or the view, you know, I mean, I guess.
It's one of the limitations of our map.
But is your question that you'd like a buffer between the third that's developed and the two thirds, that a remaining fallow to separate them?
Yeah, but I, I mean, as I'm saying it, though, I don't know that it would make much of a difference because, I mean, from the trail, I don't think that you can, I don't know.
You're much lower, you're 100 feet down on the trail. So I think that that leading edge, if you like, that southeastern edge of the panels is not going to be.
Yeah, and that's not public, I mean, it's not like it's a public park up there, you know, it's.
Right.
If it were, I would say, but the trees.
I mean, you don't want to buffer too high because that's the, that's facing that way to catch the sun.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think if there's a broad suggestion to be made, it sounds like we want to make sure that visually, you know, there's not a lot of aesthetic impact, maybe from, from any recreation area and probably also from the bridge as people are driving into Vermont. And it sounds like they've been pretty receptive to that of this project.
Okay.
And Sue, do you have any more comments to add?
Just to make the observation that it's not the first best use of the piece of land. And that.
It's not the first best use?
Yes.
Yeah. It's certainly not what we had in mind for the work on Sunday.
No.
And why did, because I wasn't here, why was this area, you know, this particular, I guess it's a field, and I'm not familiar with it at all, chosen to be included in the water and recreation zone, even though it was quite up from the river?
Because it's a nice vantage point.
It's a sort of a naturally occurring terrace. I think it's been shaped by farming and other activity.
It drops down from this other edge, 20 feet.
I don't, more than that.
More than that.
Yeah. It's a really high riveter, from a geeky geological standpoint, it's actually a pretty amazing thing.
Yeah. Have it farmed at one point?
I don't know. It's unnaturally flat at this point, but I'm.
Who owns all this?
Yeah, it was farmed, but when the, when the interstate came through, that farm was divided up.
Right.
And the top soil from all the acreage on the right side of the interstate has been scraped back in the 30 years ago.
Right.
So it has not been farmed for 30 years.
Right.
I'm remembering, I said it earlier, maybe early on when there was some talk about CNS coming down there, I think part of the plan was that on this plateau, there might have been housing.
Perhaps before.
Somehow, I don't know where that, I have it in my bag somewhere, and I don't know where I got that from, limited amount, but because it's.
Wasn't that part of the condos for Wind Stanley Development? That was kind of conceptual.
I'm not sure.
There's been conceptual.
There's been various conceptual.
Of condos and housing there. I think the Putney Road Master Plan, I think, you know, just some discussion.
Right, at various times. So it's unusual for us to have a tall, you know, a high vantage point across, you know, what is a really unique water body. So that the retreat meadows there are really spectacular.
Is it on the same vertical level as the interstate or is it?
It's below, it's really interesting. It's below the interstate but above the railroad tracks and above the water by about 100, somewhere between 60 and 100 feet, I'd say.
Can I have some of the view from the top of the hill?
No. Could we, could we make a suggestion that, I'm just putting this out here, but could we make a suggestion that because our intent is to include this in the water recreation area, that if they're using the top third for the solar panels, could we make some suggestion that they use the remaining area in, you know, in something that's more in accordance with the purpose of the water recreation zone?
Well, assuming that the draft land use regulations are adopted and assuming that they don't proceed with another Public Service Board permitted renewable energy installation, they would be bound by the new land use regulation. So it would necessarily have to be something that was permitted under the water and recreation zoning district. I'm sorry, I know that's kind of a convoluted answer, but.
You wouldn't have to write it in.
Yes.
That's it?
Yeah. You wouldn't have to.
You wouldn't have to write it in because it would already be.
Right.
And there would be no force, like by suggesting that there would be no.
Right.
Rule of force, but a zoning.
The only, the only way they can avoid doing something that's consistent with water and recreation, if it's adopted, is to do another renewable energy project.
And it would be too close to this one.
Right now, it looks you have to be about 2,000 feet away from facility to facility, and we don't have that ability in there.
No.
The Conservation Commission was concerned about this one and in particular felt like, you know, there's been substantial investment in the bridge, you know, there's, it's been deemed to kind of have a nice, to be scenic, and, you know, now you're piling it, we're a gateway to the state, and you're piling on, you're building another one right next to the other one. It might be a different program, but nobody knows that when they're driving by. And all of a sudden, Brattleboro is bearing, you know, this impact of multiple solar farms. That was one of their concerns.
What is the view from the bridge?
From the new bridge, where the new bridge will be?
From the new bridge.
You guys, it's been very difficult to see it. So we do have an aesthetic expert, TJ Boyle, his name is Mike Buscher, and he'll, he's the one that also did the 90 Technology Drive aesthetic work. So he's already been down here, looked at it. But I want to offer, when he does his report and recommendations, I'd be happy to share that with the.
Do you have any way of knowing relative to the W E 90 technology, how visible it would be from the highway?
Say that again?
Compared to the current installation, do you know if it will be more visible or less visible at this time?
According to Mike, it's going to be substantially less.
Substantially less.
Really? Huh.
Yeah, you have to remember, 90 Technology Drive takes 13 to 15 acres. So there's actually about a 15 second right now, because you're only going 50 miles an hour, hopefully. There's about 15 seconds where it's actually on the right-hand side. But because we left that part there, or it is, because we've done...
Not there.
Yeah. You hardly see it, you can't see it.
You have to kind of know it goes there.
Yeah.
I didn't notice it until we...
And that was the compromise. It's, it's some people in front of the select board said, "We want to see it." Others, a few others said, "No, we don't want to see it." So try to let people know it's there, but mitigate the visual effect.
Where's Waldo?
And I think it's worked out. I, I don't know if you all have, but I have heard no complaints about it being a nicer one.
The other one, no.
What's the parcel size for this one?
About three acres.
Three.
Local. I've got my phone number.
So, okay, so that would be good to know. So when T.J. Boyle produces the visual impact assessment, that would be an item that I think that would be of interest to the select board to review.
Yep. And I'll also have that same report for the John Seeks Drive for you.
Great.
I'd love to share that.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Engle. Appreciate it.
Yeah. I was hoping to understand a little more about the relationship between this being a net metered project as opposed to the difference in the other project. Like, and is this for a particular client? What does that mean?
Oh, a net metered versus a speed project?
Yeah.
Yes. Congratulations.
So for you to actually receive a certificate of public good, you actually have to show that you have a buyer, you have an agreement with the utility company. In this instance, it's Green Mountain Power, because we only have one. And so you need to show a contract, basically, that Green Mountain Power is willing to buy the pound. Or, in this instance, a project this small, you could have an identified single buyer who would still root through Green Mountain Power's network, you know, infrastructure. But basically, you're, you could have a private buyer that's willing to pay a rate, and that will generate income for Win Stanley, but that single individual buyer could be buying the entire generation from the site, and so that they could achieve their own renewable energy goals or whatever it is. So if you're a corporate buyer, right, and you've got a commitment to switching from non-renewable to renewable energy, and you make an agreement and you buy the power at a set rate, again, the contract has to be shown to the public, you know, the Public Service Board needs to know that the contract is in place, and certainly that Green Mountain Power has provided permission for you to place the energy onto the grid. And so with net metering, what you're looking at is you generate the electricity and you use the sale of that generated electricity to offset the power that you're buying from Green Mountain Power. So in this instance...
Or you sell it back.
Right. You might end up with a positive balance.
Yeah, it's just intriguing to me because it seems like, you know, when you're thinking about, about a certificate of public good, depending on how it's built, I mean, so there's the, there's an idea of public good in that you're producing another source of electricity.
Mm-hmm.
Right, another source of renewable electricity. But the relationship of the players is much different than...
Right.
Producing electricity for the grid as opposed to producing electricity for possibly one user that may, depending on how much electricity is produced, actually make money on it. It's just intriguing to me.
Yes, I mean, from a regulatory standpoint, there's still, arguably, there's still a benefit. So, you know, if you're making 10 units of power every day and you only buy eight and you sell the other two to somebody else who wants it, because it's renewable energy, it's still better than not having it.
Right.
It would be one argument, right? But, and if by selling those two units of power every day, that helps you offset the cost, the capital cost of installing it and maintaining it, then that's okay, too, in the sense that then it's 10 units of power that you're generating...
Right.
That you wouldn't be otherwise. So that's, I mean, that's the logic behind net metering, that it basically sets it up